The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming. We've got a lot of business to cover today. We are, we were venting up here, nothing official of course, just venting about the frustrations and trying to get people to do what they're supposed to do, when they're supposed to do it. We have about a half dozen irons in the fire that is just waiting for someone to do their job. I said I was better, but I lied. I'm not better. Let me get a pen on my pocket. I'm getting there. All right. First, we have minutes to approve.
Was anybody absent on that one? Is that when Dan was absent? Okay. I couldn't remember the date, so I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of September 16th, 2024.
And I'm second to that. All in favor say aye. All right. Then we have payroll. We have two payrolls always, one for county and one for the union hospital security. County is $256,356.26 and the union hospital security is $2,540.76.
I make a motion. We approve payroll as presented by Jim.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
You also have one for 10/7?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, yeah.
Sorry about that.
We'll get that, yeah. So let's go to new business. Person who has approval and we're going down to that. And welcome to Susan as new auditor. The previous auditor has reached her retirement date and moved on to other things.
That's the next one.
And what is the date today?
The 7th.
7th. Here we have a payroll for 10/17.
It's the 7th.
The 7th, instead of 17. And the amount of 2,000, I'm sorry, $255,855.13.
And I make a motion. We approve that as presented.
Can I second that?
All in favor say aye.
All right.
All right. We need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payable report, and that is $313,606.64.
And I make a motion. We acknowledge a receipt of the claims as presented.
Can I second that?
All in favor say aye.
All right.
All right. Then we need to approve payroll, the amount of $1,104,053.60. No, it's accounts payable. Don't have the glasses on. Accounts payable. $1,104,053.60.
And I make a motion. We approve that as presented.
Can I second that?
All in favor say aye. Big one this time.
Yep.
More highway departments.
Highway stuff in here.
Highway department. I don't know. Lots of money all the time. Did they get that road done down there today?
Yeah, they were just finishing up.
Super.
Oh, no.
Okay. Then we move to new business. Chris, what you got?
I have three things. First thing was I need the commissioner's approval to apply for the BMA salary grant from the state. This is something they do every year. It helps reverse the county for $18,450 of salary for myself at Heather.
All right. I'd make the motion. We give Chris permission to go ahead and apply for that grant from the BMA.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
The next thing is the hazard mitigation plan. A little while ago, we had a team formed to look at hazards in Park County and what we could do to mitigate them. We're going through the process. We need to keep people informed of the hazards that we have. It's about very last spreadsheet you'll see in your packet. It shows what hazards are burning. And when you look through it, it's pretty obvious that those hazards in Park County probably faces, faces this tornado. After that, we see, you know, problems with wind. If you remember 30 June last year, we had the windstorm come through knocking down power lines. And then following that, it's flash flooding, not necessarily river, river flooding, which is a problem. But county's done a lot of work to kind of mitigate that. So it's flash flooding, people living near streams that get flooded if we were to get a lot of rain. Those are the big hazards that we're going to look at mitigation actions.
Great. I think that's a great idea to be ahead of that stuff. Thank you guys. And I think Sandy Wallace played a big role in that too. I think it's a good thing.
And then the final thing is, they haven't sent you the contract yet, but I'm working with the company to upgrade the call handling equipment in the dispatch. Current stuff was, the current computer systems were installed in 2018, and it's timed out to install them. Fortunately, this is like a six-month process. So we're starting now. It's going to cost $55,000 to upgrade those three systems down the dispatch. We're not going to do the two systems up here.
What will you do with this stuff?
This stuff up here, we'll just, we won't use it anymore. When this stuff was installed, that was before you could move 911 calls to other dispatches. So it's not, it's another $40,000 to put that stuff up, and it's just not worth it, especially if you plan on moving here the next year or year and a half.
Will this money come from 911?
This is already, yeah, the council's already approved it when they approved the new equipment that we've been doing this year. And so this is just part of that.
What do you need from us, Justin?
I just, I'm just keeping you guys informed of this. It doesn't warrant your signature on the contract, because I don't think it does.
Nick does it?
Nope.
Okay.
And so I just, 55 grand, just to keep you informed of what's going on.
I think you're doing great on this move. I know it's been a tough deal to get in that direction, so I appreciate what you do. When Chris first came in, the entire system had been up and running for some time. It was all password protected by a gentleman that he had a difficult time getting contact with or permission to do things with. And I think slowly, frustratingly, things are being changed over where we have more control. Is that accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You're doing good. Appreciate it. Nothing else you need us to do? No actions from us?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. We sign the paper up here, so we're going. All right. We have a request for an out-of-cycle check.
Five.
Oh, okay. I see. Listen now.
Okay. The first one is for Digital Video Solutions. It was when they upgraded the cameras. And our monitors are now working in the offices. So that's in the amount of $3,769. The next is for Barney Carroll, for work done on the Conley Ford Bridge. There were some repairs done, in the amount of $5,500. We have V S Engineering for service on call. There was three separate ones. One for $9,373.32.
Any idea what that was for?
They were called out on July 23rd.
July 23rd is the date. I don't remember what happened on July 23rd.
Yeah, I don't remember what happened on July 23rd. I don't remember what happened yesterday.
I don't know, but that's why, that's one thing that I'm asking about. I don't know why we'd be paying them anything for the signs. We were in that situation because of the signs.
That's what I'm saying.
While we're talking about these signs, the federal government passed regulations that you see them now out on the little country roads or our little bridges, not the big ones, they're included, but only little things as well. There has to be a sign so far before you ever get there. And the sign is for the emergency management, for the emergency vehicles, fire departments and ambulances. It tells them what the maximum load is. And the maximum load that those bridges can carry is higher than the daily weight that it can carry. It's to let that first responder know if he can take his truck across that bridge or not. And so we were unaware that that even needed to be done. V S Engineering failed to follow up with that and bring that to us. And as I understand it to be, if that's accurate, then that would be on them, I would think, for not doing that. We got a call. I got a call. Luke got a call first, and then he called me that we were going to have to shut down that afternoon 18 bridges because they didn't have those signs up. And we weren't closing those 18 bridges. So I called the state, talked to the guys, said we had to close those 18 bridges or we lose this, or there'd be ramifications.
Federal funds.
So I asked them about what ramifications are you talking about? And then he said federal funding. So I called, said I need to speak to your supervisor. Well, that's just the way it is. I need to talk to your supervisor. I wanted to, I just need to talk to someone higher level, so talk to her. She was very reasonable. She understood that this was out of our control. We didn't know about that till today. We had to order the signs, I think, from North Dakota. And they were, they were supposed to be loading on the truck. And so we got a call, well, we didn't get them on the truck today, but we'll get them next week. We'll get those things on them. So all that nightmare of people not doing their jobs, things started clear back then. And so she was very, she was very understanding. So she was easy to work with. But they fully expected us to shut down 18 bridges. And so I asked her, what's the consequences? Said, do we lose that federal funding or do you just hold that federal funding until such time as we're compliant? And she said, oh, no, you get it. It's just a matter of holding it until you're compliant. I said, well, then we're not closing those bridges. I'm not going to have people have to find a new way on today. We're not doing that. And she was very understanding. The other guy was really unhappy with me, but that's just how it was. So then the company finally did get them in, and Luke and his team got them out immediately. As soon as they came in, as soon as we had them in our hands, they were taken care of. And that's what I promised her would happen. That's why Luke promised me would happen, and it happened. So if this $9,000 here is money that we're expecting to pay V S Engineering for their involvement in their time in getting those signs and getting them in the places they need to be, then I don't know if I want to pay that. Do we have any options on that now?
What's, so we have contractual language with them?
It's actually, this is actually what has happened here. The original set of prints they drew up, whole problem with the Melcher Bridge.
Oh, it's an everything then? It's not the, it's not the signs. It's Melcher Bridge?
That's.
Never mind that. Okay.
The answer would be, like, I want to know if we have a contract.
Yeah, we're obligated to.
Right. And then if so, what's that contract say?
What this boils down to here is, there was an original set of prints drawn. If you remember, the Melcher Bridge had a concrete face poured over the stone. After the bridge, you couldn't tell what was behind it. After the bridge was set off into the road.
That was poured years ago.
With that concrete slab was removed, they estimated there would be 10 to 12 inches of stone left to drill an epoxy rod in to pour in the face. There wasn't. It was roots and dirt and just crumbling. They had no backup plan. So this evidently, from what I can tell, is for the new set of blueprints, which took them from then until three, four weeks ago. They have another set of blueprints now. They have forwarded them to the DNR, the Army Corps of Engineers. Now they're waiting on them to give the okay and give us a permit to even, and now it has to be rebid. So it will be rebid now.
I think it's important for anybody, maybe watching this, and I hope lots of people watch our meetings, make sure they understand the reason the Melcher Bridge has taken so long is exactly, as Dan said, those plans were drawn up. You would have no reason to suspect that this wall that was poured back probably in the 50s, that there was nothing behind it because that's the way it's done. And so they assumed we could simply drill into their, like I say, epoxy new rods in and pour new face on it, we'd be in business. So we approved all that. We passed it. We were ready to do it. Construction had begun. And then they take that out and they find there's nothing behind it at all. So now we're right back to, hike back to page one again, start all over again. And that starting all over again means the permits, DNR and Corps of Engineers is just taking forever. That's what we're waiting for. That's the only holdup. Everything has been done on our parts that we can possibly do. We're waiting for the engineering now. We're waiting for the government to do their parts as far as giving us permits to allow us to do the things that need to be done. It is beyond frustrating for all of us. That bridge is just sitting there. It's going to sit there for another winter now. And Dan and his company, you need to know, I think, he probably wouldn't tell you, but I will, if it's okay to tell him. Dan, their company intends to go out and put a roof on it, a temporary roof, at their expense, and then they cover the lower cords to protect them from the weather coming up only because DNR and the Corps of Engineers have not been able, whether whatever reason, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything, but for whatever reason, it's taking months and months to get something approved here to get this, get this bridge going. And it's just as frustrating as it can possibly be. So that's where we are.
With that being said, I make a motion. We approve the, I'll second the checks as presented, because we did receive, we didn't send, received the blueprints from V S Engineering. And now it's in the DNR, Army Corps of Engineers hands.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
And it's really important to understand that that part, no one could have known was behind that wall. So there was no error on V S part for that.
No, not for the prints.
Not for that. No. That was entirely a surprise to everyone involved. You would never think that would have been that way. All right. It's like having an old house. And you're going to redo it. You tear off the walls in an old house, and all of a sudden you got to replace everything behind the old wall, behind the drywall. That's where we ended up. Okay.
Okay. And next we have matrix integration. It's a yearly renewal. They're quotes, so I don't know. If you just want to review them, have Nick review them.
Is it what we have now? It's just a renewal of same service?
Yes.
And they are two separate things?
Yes. One is a business standard and the other's a basic.
One is $1,050 and one is $6,336. Want to see that?
What is it for?
Software.
Yeah.
Probably the office 360.
The same service they've been performing, just New Year's, the same thing, as I understand it.
Dan, there's nothing alarming on this. It's a standard.
Okay, good.
Okay, yeah. Dan, you looked at them okay?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, but I'll make a motion that we approve the matrix integration renewal quotes that have been submitted to us.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Okay.
Do you want to sign those, Jim?
Oh, I see it. Okay. Sorry, it feels warm in here. It feels warm to me, but it's 71, so I'm not sure what to do with it.
Next, we have independent contractor agreements for temporary food inspectors.
Let me explain what this is. Our health department, Lydia usually arranges for, if that's what it is, is that what you got?
Yeah, it is. It is for the covered bridge.
For the other inspectors coming from other counties. So Lydia's going to have to have a surgery, and she cannot walk to do that job. And so the health board has had to go outside of the county to have someone else come in to, is it Hancock or Hamilton? What county was it? Hendricks? I didn't hear.
Yeah. I'm not really sure.
Anyway, those inspectors are going to come in and do the inspections for the health department during the covered bridge festival. And that's what this is for then. So I'd make the motion that we approve the independent contractor agreements as presented for the temporary food inspectors for the covered bridge festival.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Did it say what county it was? I didn't see.
No, because all she gave me was.
Nobody gave you this.
I want to say it's Hendricks, just because it went next door, it was closed. And they were, they were more than willing to do it.
Whoever's doing it's pretty excited about their work week.
Yeah, see that line just screwed up. Jamie, there's one person signed in my, two of them signed in my line. No, I'm up there. Okay. Thanks. All right. Before we go to the old business, we have some, I have some new things we need to run through here. Let me get those real quick and pull it up here. All right. One thing is, we've been talking for some time now about helping our, our few highway department truck drivers who need CDLs, get CDLs. I began that process whenever Luke came on. How many months has that been now we've been going through that? Talked today with Nancy and the lady from the Work One who arranged that stuff. She gave me the name of another person that I need to go talk to. So why we have that person to call. This has been a nightmare too, of someone taking and running with this. We're trying to get to where we can get five or six of our highway department workers' CDLs because winter's coming and we're going to need people to drive trucks to shove snow. So Work One in the state, Next Level Jobs, has a program where the state will pay for that education for those CDLs. Long story short, it comes down to, they believe now they've secured a place that can do those. Area 33, I think, that's where the Work One can do those things. But they wanted to know what I wanted done. Again, so I'm going to call her tomorrow and get this set up as quickly as I can. How this works for the county is, so the auditor will be involved with this because it will come through you. They'll bill you for that. But that's what they had done before.
Right.
So we pay for it upfront. We pay for the CDL training upfront. And then after they've worked for six months for us, then we can get reimbursed by the state for those funds. So we will pay for that upfront cost. Guys will work six months. If they leave before six months, they will be obligated to pay that money back to the county. If they stay the six months, the state will pay that money. So that way we'll have the CDL drivers. Luke, I want to ask you, I could just, let me ask you now. We're only interested right now in B, excuse me. We're only interested in the B. They could do the A, and the lady kept saying, well, I don't understand why we do, we do the B, but go ahead and do the A. Well, A is cost more, and it takes more time, and we're not, we don't have semi-drivers. We have fixed truck drivers, so that's all we need. So I think maybe they finally got it that that's what we need to do. I hope, because this has been going on a long time. Am I right in assuming that we just need the B? Just, we're not looking for anybody to get an A. If they want to get an A, they can pursue that on their own. But as far as we, our needs, we don't need one, do we?
Lowboy. Lowboy, yeah.
But we have someone drive a lowboy, don't we already?
We do. I guess if asked, my recommendation would be like, five percentage of the people that we're sending or like one out, you know?
You might ask those five or six. I'm okay with anybody who wants to do it. They might pay the difference between the cost of the B and the cost of the A to go ahead and do it while they're doing it. But we would cover the cost of the B and the state would reimburse us for that.
Yeah, with the timeline and stuff, also maybe we just find some kind of way to quantify it, like maybe 20% of the students or the employees that we send as students would be Class A. And we'd find their interest too, of course.
Yeah, if there's somebody, it's going to take longer. It's going to cost more. So let me know about that. My only interest right now is getting those five or six that you had and get them a CDL. And she asked if they had done the, gotten their permits and stuff, and I explained to her again calmly, no one has told us anything what our drivers need to do. Apparently, they need to go get a permit to get.
They need to take their written test and get their permit. They can do that without anything. Even anybody can walk in tomorrow and do that.
They need to pick up manuals and look at the stuff that's going to be on the test?
If they're uncomfortable with taking the test in the block, yes.
So they probably need to go down to the.
License branch.
License branch and get whatever the book is for CDL B, probably just CDL period, but all we're going to be doing right now is the B. And then they have to get the permit. Once they get their permit, then they can go do the testing and take the class then for their CDL.
Correct.
But nobody has told us that until just today. She said, well, I think they, the lady's supposed to know, so I'm talking to you. So that's getting frustrating. Did I mention it's getting frustrating? Yeah, I think I maybe I did.
So I should probably provide an updated list to work with.
Yes, yes. Let's get that. Unless, and I'm perfectly fine if you guys are getting anybody in our highway department that wants to get a CDL, because the state's going to pay for it.
I have no problem with it. How long, how long's it take?
I don't know. More than just going to Missouri or wherever it goes.
It's a new requirement.
Yeah, there is. And we won't know until that school tells us how many hours, how many days a week, and how many hours.
You contact them. We just don't know. How long is it going to take?
I'm going to call tomorrow. I just now, some other message just now from Nancy. Got the lady's number at Area 30 to call and see you.
I want to say 160 hours, but I'm not, I haven't thought about it for a moment.
Would you guys go and get it in just like a couple of days? How many hours of class do they have when they do it?
We've sent three of them down there, and I think they, it's two hard days, like 20 hours total.
Okay. We'll find out. I'll talk to the lady tomorrow. She'll know.
I know there's some new stuff from.
Because the third, the third day, they come home and it's, we sent them down to Missouri just because of time lost. And I'd give you that number if any of them's arrested or doing another. You have to ask Kathy.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked up that.
She's the one's paying for it, so I couldn't.
Let's find out what it costs, because maybe the state would reimburse that too, if we can do that on short term and let guys go.
Yeah.
I'm okay with those guys going on a work day and going and getting paid while they're gone, because they're getting it for the county.
Right.
If we could get a couple, five days, it'd be great. Short term, last week, we would get.
Yeah, it is. It's hard to believe, but winter is only a month away. And we've had snows in the Wimber before we had the new Wills on.
You can, you can stop by the shop or give Kathy a call, and she could probably give you the contact number and address and everything.
Okay. We'll check on that then. I was thrilled. And Nancy and my thrill, she called me. I'll see you here in the meeting Wednesday. But thrilled we're finally getting to that fragment. I don't mean finally on her part. I just mean that the whole process is finally moving in the right direction and we can, we can get there. Okay. Let's see what else I have here. We talked before, and I don't think Susan was aware of it, and I don't know if it comes through your office, I don't know who has the information. We talked about approving the monies to spend to get our ordinances codified and our minutes digitized. I didn't know if you had somebody mind who did that or not.
No.
But do you want to pursue that? Do you want to talk to other counties, see who they use? I know that Montgomery County's had it done. I've talked to John Frye before, so they can probably tell you who they use.
I will bring information to the next meeting.
That'd be great. So we were talking about digitizing the minutes so they're searchable and then codifying our ordinances as well and documentation.
It seemed like there was somebody here at the meeting. I don't know if it was your sister or not. Somebody said that they would check on that, but I don't remember who that was now. Forget who said they would do that.
Okay. I checked on, we talked about the 4H buildings being on our insurance, and that is fine with the insurance company to do that. The only request they would ask from the fair board was that they would have a special liability policy during the fair time to protect us from anything. So if you're okay with them being included in our inventory, there's no reason, they're paying for insurance and we're paying for insurance, both ain't being covered under our.
It's all insured.
Okay. Also, I think, I need to get to my job, on the salary study. We talked about having a salary study a long time, with several counties around us have done that. And I think that would be good information for the council to have. I do know that Clay County had a salary study done, and Solomon County's had a salary study done. I've seen those guys in meetings. I might contact them and see who they use for their salary study as We were talking about our money having to be committed and just some of the things. If you recall, there was an additional cost now of new software, and I don't, I don't think, is it Xoft? What are we waiting for?
Xoft.
How long was the additional cost on this? Anybody recall?
Financials.
Quarter million.
Financials. How much?
Do you remember how much it was?
134, 36,000.
Okay. We just be aware, we just need to be aware to getting into this. This is, we talked, we agreed to pay the upgrade for the software early on. This has been hanging out there for a while. It's not been available, but now we're ready to go with that, I think.
Okay. We have proposals.
Okay. That's what we need to see and agree.
But we also want to talk to the two counties that are utilizing.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll bring that to the next.
Yes. My preference would be that you guys talk, and you come up with a plan you're happy with, because I don't know about these guys, but I'm sure not going to know anything about that stuff. So you come back and tell me that's what the software is that you need. So, you come back and tell me that's what the software is that you need and that's what we go with and we'll, we'll approve and do that then. All right, um, I've talked to Dan already about the Thorpe Ford, Ford Bridge, uh, we know it needs, uh, siding, we approved that some time ago, but they just haven't had a chance to get into it because of this Meltre Bridge thing in the project, so that's all, uh, I did get a call about Nevin's Bridge, I haven't looked at that, have you seen Nevin's Bridge, what it needs?
Some of the side end looked like that last heavy rain when the waters come up and along and got into some of the sand, I looked what went outside, didn't, I don't know if he had looked at it or not.
We'll catch him in a minute and talk about that. The other question, um, came up, um, burn ban, I got, uh, requests, requests from one, uh, fire chief today, and then another thought that was probably a pretty good idea. They think it's been long enough, dry enough, and the forecast is showing dry for another week, the bridge festival. Should we go ahead and do a?
I, I think, I think we're gonna have to extend it, because they're not calling for it in the next ten days, no moisture.
So, is that your motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend it until further notice or we get a good rain.
The motion would have to say to reinstate it and extend it, that's okay.
Reinstate it, yes, because it's not in now.
Right, it's suspended right now, yes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to reinstate the burn ban until further notice, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, but he's back in there, he might ask.
Nevin's Bridge, what's, I got a call about that, have you looked at Nevin's Bridge, do you know why it's there?
So, what's happened is we just cleared a lot of brush and a lot more is exposed, and, uh, we're getting better visibility on it. There's, um, uh, deciding, I think, is the issue with Nevin's Bridge.
Just needs reciting and the entire thing?
As a log went through it, it looked to me like it's almost folded in, or like a log had come.
No, I, um, my honest opinion is, uh, the seam on that siding is the same all the way through. So, once one part works loose, the rest is easy to work loose.
Gotcha.
So, um, all it needs to be done is it just needs to be tacked back down for now.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know at the right time, uh, either replace some siding or just get, um, some of that stain and get a nice finish on it.
Okay, well, it's never, it's been with that bridge and I never know, I don't know why, forever, that's never been a painted bridge, and it was kind of famous because it wasn't painted. I've always thought that was silly because you, you short years on the, on siding that way, so I'm okay that we recited that we painted that stain like we do anything.
I'm fine if you guys paint it and be done with it.
Now, the Community of Vipers Commission has always worked with the highway department, has split that fifty-fifty on reciting bridges and repainting bridges and repairing roofs. So, if you get a cost together of that, do you have someone to work on roofs, because the Thorpe Ford Bridge has suffered from that last windstorm, suffered damage?
We do, um, I take its availability, but we do have a contractor that, uh.
You might contact, or I can, but if you're gonna do that, George Smith, have you talked with George Smith before, our insurance agent, Rosdale?
Yeah, I have, absolutely.
Um, that, those bridges, I, I don't know if they're covered or not, fits for them, because they're not for fiery thing, you know if they're covered for roofs?
I don't know.
I don't think they're covered for anything, just because they're these old wooden structures out in the middle of nowhere, but you might ask him if they're covered.
Yeah.
Can Barney take care of it, Barney care of it?
Yes.
They'll say he's painted and.
That'd be great.
It, he's painted that work on the roof, so I assumed he could probably roof.
The picture I got just shows part of it up, if we could at least get that down so it's protected until after festival's over and then look, putting a new, new roof on it before winter gets here?
Uh, what roof was that again, not Nevin's?
Uh, Thorpe Ford, down by Rosdale.
Thorpe Ford, that side of Roseville.
Oh. Is it okay to move immediately on it?
Uh, yeah, yeah, on the roof, absolutely, yep. And the reason that, uh, Luke asked this question, and we've had this talk several times, and I appreciate it, it is enthusiasm, but as we know, all those bridges are on the National Historic Registry. And so, I'm just asking that before they do any repairs, the bridges, that we know about it and you know about it, and make sure it fits with the historic needs that we do. There's even requirements on the kind of roof you go back with, you have to go back to the similar roof that was on it, if that's possible. So, anytime you guys have major repairs like that, just, just go with this first, guys come through this first and let us go with it. Not to, not to take what you do, just to make sure that all the bases are covered, that need to be covered on that stuff.
Yeah, of course.
But if a roof comes up, it needs a, and it's metal, it needs a new piece or two that blew off, get it, put it on, don't think anything about it.
Yes, we recently bought a little stockpile of that, just so that we had, uh, the matching, uh, genuine.
As long as you match it like that, then that's not a problem, it's only if we're gonna change anything, we have to get approval to be able to do that.
Yep.
Um, and, let's see here, something else, on the bridges, I thought. Then the only other thing is I've had calls, and you've had calls about the bridge and road closing, in fact, I got interviewed, a TV interview today and they asked about that again. And I told them, as I understand it, the, the road closing will be the same as they were last year?
Correct.
Okay, so they'll better be as same as it is. And then maybe this, uh, summer or after the festival, we have a meeting, and, because some people thought they weren't included in the meeting and, I don't, I don't know if that's, if they weren't included or if they just didn't go, I don't know, I don't know about that stuff.
We had a meeting, only two people showed up.
That's what I thought the situation was, yeah. So, we'll find out about that, and, uh, then we'll just be evaluating, see if, uh, any changes need to be made, but that's you guys, you guys have done all the work on that. So, I told them I wouldn't be having any role in that other, just supporting whatever decision you and that committee you've been working with come up with.
I guess if Bruce still willing, after everything settles down, after the festival, we'll get with them and see what their thoughts are again.
Great, great.
Are vendors allowed at that?
At what?
Your meeting.
Well, the, they would be, but the only problem is it's gonna be sometime after the festival.
Right, right, and this vendor is, well, he's in parallel.
Yeah.
And yet, he had some questions, I was like, by all means.
Yeah.
I will talk, but I do believe you're allowed at the meetings.
Yeah, we'll have a open meeting, then we'll open.
Yeah, really, anybody can come to any of those meetings they get on.
Okay, so we'll pass the information to him.
But as far as the date, we can't, we'll wait till after the festival, I'll get with Bruce and see what his schedule is and.
Okay.
All right, sorry about all that time, um, you guys have any other new business to bring up or move into old stuff?
Nope, I think you've covered it.
All right, old business, Rico, the changes to the original contract, price due to equipment upgrades, um, goes from thirteen ninety to fourteen forty. I make the motion, we approve the, uh, new contract at, uh, fourteen hundred and forty dollars and forty-five cents.
I just need you to initial by the yellows.
Oh, and figure say aye.
Aye.
Initial.
By the yellows, the highlighted.
Each of them?
Yeah.
And then core facilities invoice, I don't know if you guys have seen pictures of that copper, I mean, I need to see pictures of the copper, but, yeah, the copper in the jail is failing badly. We were, we were ahead of this, and, uh, this came to us through, uh, a core facility, that's Matt Steckley, who's been doing the, uh, the site management on all this, as well as creating the specs and putting out the bids. Let me see if I got a picture here for you. See, in my inexperienced life of this type of stuff, I always thought that the copper lasted forever, but apparently it does not.
Have you reviewed, because it was requested in down payment?
Of sixty percent.
Yeah, we usually don't do down payments, and I saw, and that's what I said previously, and I saw that he responded back that we had, but not to my knowledge that we've ever done down payments.
I didn't think we had either.
We usually pay for services provided.
Here's a couple of pictures and a few slides, and that's just the copper.
Yep.
Copper tubing in the, in the jail, so we have not only that, but joints failing and valves failing because it's just coming apart.
Copper stuff.
Really, see, I didn't, I thought our last verb was off the Y the U.
Better than that stuff they had before copper, I don't remember what it, but then it gets all gummed up on inside, the stuff before the copper does.
But that's actually deteriorating, it looks like, coming apart.
It seems actually becoming out of the sheriff's pay to fix all this stuff.
Good luck.
See, okay, all right, so, um.
What's your thought?
We typically don't do, I mean, that's a lot of money upfront, that's not something we typically do, is that kind of money upfront.
Um.
Heads, have they already bid it or is the company in their founders, or?
I think this is for his services, not to, not to pay the, the vendor upfront, isn't it? Or is it, uh, for the vendor, I thought we had paid some ahead of time just to pay for materials, people can start jobs. I don't, I just don't recall.
I, I don't recall having done that.
Is there a statute forbidding us from doing that?
I can look real quick.
Might not, I mean, don't mind, that's what I told him when I talked to him, so my understanding is.
Jim gave us a nick to check on the down payment.
Is that everybody, uh, we can only pay for services rendered, we can't speculate on services being rendered.
But it says we cannot pay until work is done, this is Mary Ann's notes, uh, from what you and Nick said.
There was, uh, three or four contractors in today, taking a tour and looking at all the pipes.
Okay, great.
Work on their estimates, I guess.
Uh, has any of this shut, much of your facility down?
Uh, briefly.
So, they've been able to kind of bypass?
Yeah, perhaps, then as they go.
That's my recollection too.
I mean, it looks to me like first been three or four contractors in there, look at it, and it's a price.
Yeah, then it's got more than that.
I've never collected anything upfront for a started job, and I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think this is for the, the, uh, the vendors, I think this is for his services, I think.
I don't know why he would want six years.
So, I think you're just gonna have to wait, and I, I think that's what I was gonna be, let's make something there specific.
Now, if he's done some work and he wants to submit an invoice, and the work is done, bill us, that's fine.
That's, we usually do the staggered, like, that's what we typically do.
It's not a down payment then, it's just paying for services.
Services that he's already done before the project starts, that's okay, but.
But yeah, my recollection is, it's, my recollection is, it's, we're not allowed to do it, but I know we haven't been doing it.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't know it was close that we couldn't, but it makes sense to me as a government entity that you can't speculate on work being done, and can't pay for somebody, then see if they haven't been, show up and do it one day.
I would say send him a email or call him and tell him, we can pay him for services rendered at the point he's at now without a problem.
Just the structure is back into an invoice instead of a down payment, we'll be okay. All right, we can do that. All right, um. We probably need to have an ARP committee meeting, and once, once you guys find out, we have to have that committed by the, by twenty-four, there are several options out there. I still believe there's about a million left in the ARP fund, I think, and we've been very reluctant to spend it on things, but there are some big bills waiting out there, the software was one. We have bridge repairs, which we could look at if that was, uh, beneficial. The highway department roof needs either replacement or a new, new cover on it. Uh, needs some mold mitigation before we get a problem, I guess not mitigation, but prevention, to make sure that's, that the painting is done and water seepage is taken care of. So, that's an option we can look at on things. The jail, uh, the jail job as far as the copper and the valves, that's something we can look at, so we certainly have plenty of projects out there that, uh, normally would be general funded dollars, if any, those ARP funds can be used to relieve those ARP funds to free up the other, other things.
If your sources correct on this, what is our date that we have to have this committed contracts?
Into the year.
The end of this year.
And you were gonna check if it's actual contracts or just obligations, right?
Yeah, but again.
Yeah, we need to know which it is, obligation or contract.
Those are all things Susan and I'll get, but for what I, the people I talk to, if it's gonna be like a project, like say like the roofing project or whatever, they said a contract has to be signed.
Okay.
If it's like a payroll situation, let's just say we gonna give everybody a fifty thousand dollar raise, there's no contract to sign for payroll, but it has to be appropriated by the council before the end.
Okay.
But, you know, Clay County, for example, Clay County spent all their ARP money, it's gone.
Right.
I talked to Paul Senders, they built a morgue because their coroner is a, uh, funeral home director, and they didn't want any conflict there, so they built a morgue. They roofed their courthouse, they gave all the fire, uh, volunteer fire companies some money, and they spent the rest of it on roads.
Okay.
Um, but they just spent it all, but Paul said his understanding was that, yes, it had to be obligated by the end of the year.
Well, we can do that, certainly with the.
We don't have to spend it till the end of twenty-six, see, that's what's really.
You gotta have a contract, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta have it obligated in twenty-four, but you got until twenty-six to spend it, so it's just crazy, it's just crazy.
And I don't know how many contractors would, uh, sign a contract at twenty-four, knowing you're not gonna do the work for twenty-six, the surprises are in quote twenty percent in the next two years.
Well, the other thing too is, to start with, we wouldn't allow to use it on roads or anything.
Couldn't, we couldn't, and we can now because it's been converted to revenue shortfall.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a plus.
And so, we, we talked before about, we have a couple of main ones, uh, main roads that we have been on hold for a long time, Marshall Road and, um, Strawberry Road have been on hold for a long time, even patch forever, so it would be nice with this money that we could ingest into it, so we all get done at one time, so they're just jumping along the lines as we go down, so it'd be good. Just so you know, seven seventy-five had been completed by Milestone, they spent a day, eleven and a half hours they were out there, one day, uh, doing wedging and, and preparing it. And then they worked, uh, Friday and Monday today to get the paving done, so that is done. They're gonna come back and do eight hundred, they asked about doing that during Bridge Festival, but of course, we can't have them working on roofs during Bridge Festival, people are everywhere, so they'll come back and get that, that finished. Okay, uh, that's all the old business I have, you guys have any?
I have your answer, it's in legislation right now to try to change it so fifty percent can be put down, but they haven't passed it yet.
Okay.
So, we cannot?
We cannot.
Okay, I'll let you know.
It hasn't passed, they started that process in August to two thousand twenty-three, but so far it has not become law.
And I, I, he'll understand.
That was my recollection on it by just.
See, I, I remember.
And that came from AIM, the, the, whatever, municipal, yeah.
City in town.
Yeah, that's where that came from.
Because it is speculation, you're paying now on the speculation that they're gonna come do the work, so if, if you hire me, you give me sixty thousand bucks and I go out of business, you got nobody to shoot, because I went bankrupt, I closed my, I closed my business and you're just out of that.
Well, then that's why we passed that ordinance on construction stuff, Jason and I did a couple of years ago, where people were doing that and we could go after them then and stuff. But yeah, so right now it's still, the law is that we can't.
I have him, I have him bill us for a lot of work he's done.
Yeah, installments are better for us.
Okay, all right, that'll work. All right, that's all I have. Um, if no more old business, we can go to Beth Martin. Beth, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
I don't know if we're in limbo with you or not, I'm under the impression that we need to appoint you to that position, but we always do that at the request of the Plan Commission.
Right, I thought maybe you would be here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Nick, can you speak up?
They, they did vote to, like, approve her and ask for her approval at the last meeting.
Okay.
I was there when they did that, so it just needs your blessing.
Okay, so they have been, they have made a request then. So, you might note the minutes that we have been requested by the Plan Commission to appoint Beth Martin to be the, I don't know what your title is, Director?
Cassie was administrator.
Administrator for the Planning Commission, I'd make the motion that we appoint Beth Martin to be the administrator for the Plan, Planning Office.
I think I'll second that.
All fairs say aye.
All right.
All right, you're on.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have anything for us, by the way?
Um, I do, and I'm first on the list, so I'll go ahead and address it, I believe it's in your packet. There has been a request from a contractor regarding, and make your aware of this too, a thirty-seven panel solar installation on a private property for private use only. So, whether or not it falls under what's in the moratorium right now, um, Nick can speak to that, um, again, it's.
My impression it would fall on the moratorium because it says solar energy period, it doesn't say on private or public property.
Okay, so, um, we'll have to respond to this contractor and tell him evidently there's a family issue and there's a, a person in the, in the household who is, um, for health reasons relies upon having power in the event RMC loses power twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
I don't know how solar would meet that need if power went down, if it's cloudy day, they're out of luck anyway.
Looked to me like an LP.
Well, according to this, if you read it, what they're putting in, in the last seventeen years, sunny, not sunny, whatever, whatever they're putting in, the last seventeen years. So, this child, it's a twenty-three-year-old child who needs this stuff, and that way they'll never be without power now. I, not it, I don't know anything about solar, so whether your mom and dad's got solar, I don't know.
If you put a battery backup system in, you can run pretty stinking long time.
How long thing?
Depends on how big size your battery backup.
I don't know why you wouldn't, like Dan was saying, for the emergency situation like this, why you wouldn't put in a propane generator so you know you have power regardless of how long you're up?
Personally, I'm looking at solar in the next year, I'd like to have one.
Yeah.
But without the battery backup system, you have to have generator.
Yeah.
Well, it, it does need cleared up as to commercial, not residential, like, that needs to be clear, because the, the moratorium does specifically say commercial, it doesn't say.
Oh, it does say, okay.
Our moratorium language says commercial, I don't know what their language says, but it needs to be clear that it's residential before you can potentially.
That's the, it's just an email that Beth received from the contractor.
I might have seen this already.
That's an awful situation she's in. I have no problem with that.
I mean, we just need to be clear, whatever we give them in writing, that this is for residential purposes only, it's not for commercial purpose, cannot be, and that would be a violation.
Yeah, and I have no problem with that at all, I don't want somebody telling me I couldn't have it on my property if I wanted it to.
Residential's different than the commercial, it's just.
I agree.
Most of the ones that pass commercial are having litigation now, there's a lot of litigation down in southern Indiana on some commercial renewable energy projects and things like that. So, the, the moratorium's actually good for us because we're kind of seeing how it plays out there.
And that was the whole idea of it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I assume that if they have. And I assume that if they have it hooked to the grid and putting it back in, that's considered commercial, considered selling it back.
Right, it is. That's commercial if they're selling it. But they're also gonna have to have approval from R M C if it's somehow R M C's attached to them, but they can't enter one of those agreements with R M C to sell it to them.
Because that does.
Because that's commercial.
Yes, correct.
That's for sale.
Yeah, quick question on that. If you were hooked up in selling back to R M C as a personal homeowner, since I'm looking into it. They give you a credit. You can't actually get paid from them, so that would still be okay, correct?
No.
That's compensation still, yeah.
However, you can compensate it for it.
So currently there is no solar allowed to be installed in our county.
Right.
And I guess, what's the reasoning on that from a residential perspective? I mean, I understand the commercial, that's on the next.
It's just no controversy. We have no, no problem with the residential. As soon as you start selling it, then, then the residential will start popping up every place, be the same thing as having a commercial feel out there someplace.
Yeah, I guess.
We're just, we're just taking our time to make sure we do this, but there's so many problems throughout the state with those things, we gotta get this right.
Fountain County's a mess.
They is, it is. Southern County just has some huge ones down there, and now commissioner friends of mine are really having second questions on whether they should have done that or not. I don't have a problem with taking up farmland and do that because it's my farmland, I can do whatever I want with my farmland. If I wanna grow corn, I can grow corn. If I wanna put solar panels out there, I can put solar panels. It's always my property. I don't think someone who doesn't live on my property should be able to tell me what I can and do with my property as long as I'm not affecting their property. But, that being said, you gotta have these ordinances in place to be able to make sure you have some say over what, what goes.
There, what the litigation's a lot about, it's affecting the roads and the bridges and, like, it's, it's the secondary things that, like.
Wild, whatever.
Right, they haven't been adequately addressed or residual effects on the soil and.
Or even the parents just have to look at it all the time, but, but, so, so, some require so many feet setback, some require full shield of agriculture, whether it be bushes or trees or whatever it be. Those are all those things that all these counties have been fighting all these years, and so we put the moratorium in place because of what happened in Montgomery County. What happened up there was they didn't have approval from any county entity at all, government entity, and they started doing research and business and prep work. And then the county came up and said, no, 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 we're not, we're not doing that, because we don't know what, what, what we're gonna approve where. I mean, we just can't make somebody accept that if they don't want that. We gotta decide as a county what we're gonna do. So the contractors sued the county then. They wanted all that money back that they spent for that early research stuff. Ended up the county, one, they didn't have to pay that back, but we were advised by the state to get a moratorium in place to wait until you have this. How you want it to be, then go out, go out with that in hand, and that's how we're gonna do that on the residential thing, I mean, on the commercial thing. But I actually agree with you and the parents and with you on the residential. It's mine, it's nobody's business how I'm generating electricity. I'm not, I'm not affecting anybody around me, so it's nobody's business as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I guess my concern's just the, the selling it back to R M C.
Can't do it, yeah. My other compensation is.
Twenty thousand dollars in batteries.
Yeah.
And then it's, why are you getting solar? I mean, you could pay your entire electric bill for your life for twenty grand, so. Okay, so that is something you guys are working on.
Oh, yes, we have. We've had multiple meetings with the state on that, but nobody's come back to us about pursuing that. We've had two different companies. We're gonna give a sample ordinances, and the state even has a company they use to write sample ordinances suggesting how you should write, have this written up to make sure that everything's covered. Because what do we know about what we should or shouldn't cover? There's, there's trustworthy entities dealing out there, there's something that you don't wanna deal with, and we would know they are.
Very much evolving area of law right now, and it, not just in Indiana, but there, I mean, it's, there's just litigation all over the place right now.
Give me exactly, man, I know about this. One of the early things up in Benton County, when the windmills first came up there, and they were great, and landlords were collecting the money off of them, but in the early ones, there was no no language saying what had to be done with those once they went offline, once they didn't want them anymore, and so it turned out that for the original ones, the early ones, the homeowners were stuck with that bill of tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to take those down and out, and, and then you gotta find someplace to take them because no place will take them because they're not recyclable. So they were stuck with that bill. Now, because of that, they fixed all that. Now that's all included in contracts, but that's why counties have been moratoriuming. Let's figure this out. Before we start jumping down this road, what, what needs to be done?
And not just the wind, even the solar panels, get them.
Same thing, same thing.
Find a place to go with them.
Yep. There is a new company, by the way, that now is recycling those wings off the, off the windmills. They figured out what they can do with them now. They breaking it, they actually ended up breaking it down to some kind of a fuel, liquid fuel that is consumable. I don't know how they do that, but I saw a thing on YouTube about it. I saw it on the internet, so it must be true. It's gotta be, gotta be factual. Alright, um, anybody else have anything? Yes?
I wanna talk about Route ten fifty east.
Okay, up by Tangier?
Pardon me?
Up by Tangier? Oh, that's definitely northeast, okay.
Out by the lake.
Yeah, okay.
It is terrible. I've been living out there for almost forty years. It's never been paved. All they do is pat, pat, patch. It's full of holes down. You run over the patch and you did fault ball. That little bridge embankment that followed the hill.
Is it paved now?
No.
So why are they patching? You mean just filling in holes and gravel?
What they did, it used to be a rock road and they come down and chipping sealers or something.
Okay, I'll have Nick go and look at that, see what he got.
What they did off of the thirty six there, just, I don't know, probably ten years ago, did a short distance, maybe a quarter of a block, lot of asphalt. Got to the bottom of the hill right there and stopped. They didn't go across the little bridge embankment that followed the hill.
Okay, well, look at that. See, what, I can't picture where ten fifty east is.
You know the Walker boat ramp, yeah, straight across, go north.
Oh, the other way, okay, yeah, 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 you know, we're talking about that, okay.
How it goes out there by Canadian.
It's full of holes now.
Wood.
It's full of holes and bumpy and you wait forever to get it fixed and it just, a week later, week and a half later, whatever they did, they'd be trucks. We had semis coming down through there the other day.
Okay.
Well, you know, that wood.
No, that's south, east up north. Are you talking south?
You're talking Canadian Wood Products is right there, right?
No, I'm going north.
Cross from Walker.
No, it's north, north.
North from Walker, okay.
Still turning south on Walker, turn north.
There's a campground down at the end of that.
Yeah, okay, I know where you're at.
There's a housing dish and all the way to the end, Park Campground is to the left, East Side Out. Now they're building fancy places in there, and doctors and lawyers are living in there.
We'll have Nick go out and look at that, then see what, what we can do, what recommendations are. Nick's our new highway superintendent, so.
It's never.
He's calling me Nick all day. Have Luke, Luke go, and we'll look at that thing, see what we can do. Appreciate it letting us know. It's really on lawless. People call me sometimes, and I've never had a bad phone call. People think I get them all the time, I don't, but people call, and then they're apologetic for pointing out a fact that a road needs work, but we're not on every road every day, or even every week or every month, so it's, it, don't ever be shy about bringing that to our attention about a situation that you got.
Before you went to public comments, you forgot Fraser and Luke.
Ah, yeah, I didn't realize I was going there, but.
Department heads.
What you got?
Me? With the new jail surrounding the, um, all around the county, um, like Vermont County has a new jail, Fountain County has a new jail, so it's, it's kind of thin this out on out of county inmates. But I recently started housing Vigo County. We're up to five from there.
Why does, why do, they got their new jail, why do they need more?
Already overflowed.
I won't speak, I don't know.
Wow.
You wanna keep your capacity around eighty percent, they say, so I'm guessing they're getting.
Up there?
I think there's six hundred and some beds there. But anyways, year to date for inmate housing, it's one hundred ninety three thousand, six hundred sixty five dollars. And if we keep adding Vigo County inmates, it'll should increase.
Do you have any cells now you can't use because of the, the copper situation?
No.
Okay.
No.
I hope we get that done.
We had a couple leaks in the kitchen, um, they shut the water off for a couple hours, they fixed that, and then there was one in the hallway.
Okay.
Same thing, couple hours, they fixed that, so we've just been patching it.
Okay.
Obviously, hopefully we'll have that fixed before too long.
And they fixed the bypass, the valves that, that they were lacking that you kept getting coated for, right?
Yes.
That, that's all fixed, taken care of.
Yep, and then they're, uh, fixing the drainage starting tomorrow.
Yeah.
The outside drainage.
Chris is in hospital, so we couldn't get there. Chris Harmon's doing the drainage stuff, so he's, he's back now, so he should.
Probably need to see how they fix that. I don't know what they'll do, but.
Okay.
That should help. That's all I have.
Been quite a project. It's gonna be good to get it done. Luke, what you got? See, it called your first, first name.
Yeah, there we go. Uh, just give you a couple updates on things that, for disclosure, we talked about Arizona East Burnell, uh, Federal Highway Administration had, uh, recognized it or flagged it, and, uh, we were able to get out there, um, just about twelve or fourteen hours after.
What did it need?
Uh, there's a lot of scouring, like, up to like ten inches. Uh, what we did is do like a design rip wrap all around it. All embalmed in the wing walls, both sides and buttons. So that never did get closed, uh, because we were able to, uh, have, we were able to communicate with them directly and get immediate approval.
Great.
What class of rip wrap are you using?
Uh, not the uniform, uh, I hope it was a class two.
Okay, probably.
Yeah. Is it fracture?
Well, it depends on the size of stream and the scour is the class. They have some that's four hundred pound.
Yeah, yeah.
When you get like big Raccoon Creek and stuff, you're, the small stuff don't do it.
Wash away?
So there's, yeah, so there's different classes. They have use for different sizes. That's why I was wondering, is mostly just smaller?
This is a solid rocking board, yeah, yeah, low volume most of the time.
Okay.
And then we also took that out to indoor corner, one of the embankments. And then we did brush clear. We're already out there, so we did all of them.
Okay. Are you happy with the milestone on seven seventy five? They done, they done?
I am, um, we talked about the tonnage allowed and, and differing road widths, uh, part of that road width. We were able to use that, some extra tonnage to make that road even thicker in certain areas.
I saw, I saw that there by Mansfield, was there?
Yeah, so that I liked, uh, and how they applied that. Um, there is one issue with the pavement that I was gonna talk to the project manager about.
Okay.
Um, kind of, where they started and stopped work one day, um, so just make sure of that. We don't have water getting into that.
It's a crack or a bump or seam or?
It's a seam, yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah, I haven't had a chance yet, but I wanna talk to them about that seam before, that it's cracked before, learn.
I know they have now, because we just went through this last year, I don't know what it's called, that they use when this, on the, on the two paths come together, fill that seam, that's supposed to like weld it together, the side won't go away, so maybe that's what they, they could do to that, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't remember what that's called. Tom Martin went down.
Yeah, I know, it's a thick, uh, I can't remember what it's called. It's thick and it's black.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But anyhow, um, yeah, that job, uh, we'll go ahead and talk about it. Yeah, so seven seventy five, uh, completed servicing today, and then we're gonna go back and fit some solar up in certain areas, um, where there's quite a lip and even, uh, um, like in the lower areas, uh, where it's subject to get, uh, worshiped. And then eight hundred south, uh, should begin right after cover Bridge Festival.
How long a strip is that?
Uh, I can't remember if I'm gonna have to.
You may know the name of it, I know Dan will know the name of it, but if you go from Raccoon, I'm sorry, I should turn that off. JB's showing up now, I'm gonna ignore him, so I just know, we already took care of that business. If you come off Mansfield Road off of fifty nine, going toward Bridgeton, and then you end up on Raccoon, um, Raccoon Road, there's a little section there, it's not very long, quarter mile maybe or so long, that's gravel, it's not blacktop. I know what I'm talking about.
Mace?
Raccoon.
Where you just have to cross over that little, um, bridge.
Raccoon Road tees and it goes to Pleasant Valley.
Yes.
And there's a little stretcher of, of a.
But actually, that section of Raccoon Road was paid for by Bob Major. From Bridgeton Road, out past that two story house.
Okay.
That was a double chip and seal, and that was paid for by Bob Major.
I see.
You talked to Randy about it, but, which makes you obligated to patch what part of that road is.
What I was getting at was there's a such a, such a gravel, gravel road there. It's not very long, quarter mile or less.
Is it on Raccoon Road before you get to the tee?
It's on Raccoon Road and before you get to the tee on, on Bridgeton Road, yeah.
Going north.
Going north, you go up on Raccoon, you go around, and, and it, where it changes, I think Mansfield Road goes south, but this goes straight. I can't describe it, um, but there's about a quarter mile section. Quarter mile, I hear it's about that, about that far, if even that far.
Call the resident, roundabout.
Yeah, is there, and the only complaints I've had with the Bridgeton thing is we've had some motorcycles that go that way to get around, because they can't go around, and that's a gravel section. Is that something we could pave ourselves? Do you have funds to, to pave that little short section?
If you're talking that quarter mile strip, the same area I'm thinking of, if it was a double chip and seal, could you just double chip and seal it, that quarter mile?
Yeah.
It would match the, because I know if you're talking from Bridgeton Road on Raccoon Road and before you get to the tee, I know Bob paid from there, past his house because of the dust and he owned a farm on both sides.
I was thinking it was all paid.
He probably had quit that small section because he wasn't getting dust from there and he never went that way. But if it is a double chip and seal I'm thinking of, and I could even meet you out there Wednesday and look at it, but if it is that double chip and seal, I have no problem with adding that quarter mile.
Yeah, and that would be my recommendation too, doing the chip and seal. Um, if we do it internally, uh, that's gonna be just for the product.
Okay. It's a, it's just, well, that's the only section for folks, now that we've changed the bridge and you can't go through bridge anymore, you can't stay on blacktop anymore. If you go that way, you're gonna have to get on gravel roads. If we can take care of that section for all the people that, that are affected, we're talking about our own people affected by that, that blockage. They're having to drive on gravel roads, they didn't have to drive on before. If we could take that for them, I'm not doing that for the tourists to come in, but for our people, if we can fix that so they can stay on blacktop, that'd be great.
I'll be around Wednesday, Thursday, both, so if you wanna call me and I'll meet you down there and we'll look it over.
I know, I just came from Mansfield, going to Bridgeton, we took Mansfield Road, and I think Mansfield Road went, went south and this road went, went ahead and went straight and then turned into, to Raccoon Road.
Yep.
And there's that little, little section there.
You would have went past Ivan Loys and Pleasant Valley Cemetery and then on the real curbs where you got into. I'll, I'll meet you over there. Just call me ahead of time.
Yeah, I know folks out there notice the difference in the last year or so, you know.
We just don't wanna impact our people with those closings in, in Bridgeton, if we can avoid it, and that's the only thing, just that one little section.
Yeah, so speaking of that, um, chip and seal, we did, um, last week we were able to do four hundred east and Judson Road. And then, uh, Martin Road has been a priority too for some time, and, uh, we just, because of the application of that onto a gravel road, uh, those four different applications, we just, uh, didn't have time before anticipated traffic. So that is the road that we intend to do next.
Right.
We actually wanna do that for cover bridge if the temperature's allowed, and that would be a good opportunity just to hop over there and.
But before the, I mean, you're only looking to do. To do.
No, after the festival.
Okay, yeah, so what you ready for next year?
We were gonna prime it actually, um, Friday or Saturday, and then we were just, uh, really cautious if we had any kind of, of a failure or, or something, and we even talked to the contractor. Uh, we had been looking at feasibility of a contractor helping us meet some timelines, and, uh, without being able to provide a complete package of several roads, uh, the unit price went up so high that, um, it really wasn't in our best interest.
After the festivals are, get our heads together and figure out what.
And we are talking about having to have some obligations on some of the ARP money that we have left, and so there are some of those needs, be that, be it that quarter mile, chip, double chip seal, or other sections that need to be done, but, but lack of money by being the end of the year, maybe we can arrange that, get that under contract before the end of the year. We just need to know what numbers you're looking at for some of some of those projects.
And obviously there's more roads or more, uh, amounts to do that are, that are pricing there is.
Yep.
That might be one of those just contract.
Okay.
Um, so that might provide that opportunity. So, uh, that big windstorm we had, uh, we were, um, responding for about an eighteen hour period of time throughout the night, uh.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. That's just my thing about this. Jason sent you before, you have to take off on us. There's a difficulty between, of dispatch contacting him with the phone that he has. Dispatch had called me, they'd been trying, trying to get ahold of him, because there were trees down. I called and he said, we're out, we've been out all night, and he said there, there is a problem with dispatch. Is that something that we need to have looked at about getting that, that phone fixed? Because they cannot call to.
I sent them his number to sell you, you didn't me.
Yeah, that's what they called and didn't get through.
Cause his cell phone, for some reason, outgoing calls, uh, from the surfboards seem to not be connecting to some cell phone.
Good. Do you have a handheld radio? Should you get ahold of me on the radio?
I, no, no.
Need to talk to Chris and get a handheld radio and just keep it at your house and.
Yeah. That'd be great.
You, you'll know if there's a windstorm, you throw it in your truck, or if there's storm coming, you're gonna be elsewhere even though it's on the weekend.
And if he doesn't have any of those left, that's another thing, our money could provide those things, that's, that's, that's public service right there.
You need a handheld radio and that way, even if there was a dive emergency over there, we had a terrible storm, he could even. You need a handheld radio and that way, even if there was a dive emergency over there, we had a terrible storm, he could even get ahold of that.
Yeah. Now, I, I would say dispatch did a great job in adapting.
Oh, they did, yeah.
They were texting and, um, and there was a shift change, and I think he was hesitant to text. That's kind of out of the norm, but that nice shift responded very well.
Just Friday.
Yeah.
Stop in and see Chris.
Yeah, we just, that shouldn't have been a struggle for you guys or for them. If we only get that fixed, the works are done. If that's a radio, like Dan says, if that's a solution, we can do that.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, but your nice shift dispatch.
I know you don't want radio hanging over your neck every time you're off, but it comes as a territory.
Well, you know, you know, it's quite impressive. We removed, uh, some like, you know, we found trees along the way, and I was anticipating I'd actually stay awake because I knew that when the sun came up, people started moving around, we were gonna find more. So I know there was at least twenty six different places that we removed trees, and dispatch had mentioned the, um, fire department was, um, uh, already busy. So we activated about a dozen guys throughout the night at different times, uh, just try to free up the fire department.
Great.
So, and we had some leadership in the north, south, we just divided.
Tell the guys, good job. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Um, yeah, so let's, um, roof update, I, uh, I'm trying to cover that. We have a complete, we got several. We talked about the covered bridge roofs. Um, that, the bridge you guys mentioned, it plays cedar shake roof, correct?
Yeah, we have no interest, at least I think.
Which one? Thorford?
Anything, anything with a cedar shake, we're not interested in going back to cedar shake. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, um.
The Thorford's metal anyway.
It is?
Yeah, it's some metal and ridge cap, I'm pretty sure.
I think you're right too, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So anything that's metal, go back with the metal. Anything that shingle, if we, if we get approval, we'll go back with metal too. We wanna put them all back to metal if we can.
Okay.
But, but if for some reason we're, we're not, there, there's no, no place we wanna put cedar shake back on. That was on Smith and Hildick, like you said, so let's get that off.
Before winter, I think we have an opportunity to fix, uh, a few different roofs.
Great.
Um, I don't know the appropriate time, but I'd hate to wait two more weeks, but I'd like to give a list, um, of roofs that I can get approval on. I'd be delighted to move forward on.
Uh, if you want to get a price off of Barbie on them and?
That'd be great, yeah.
Bring us a price if we got the money. I have no problem. I need fit, so.
Okay. And, um, oh, um, looking to get approval to discard a pickup truck that we've had in our fleet. There is a two thousand five F two fifty. Yeah, right now we have a quote for repair. We're down two trucks in our department, and, um, I'm actually using my personal truck. Uh, one of the trucks, um, we pulled together and made a determination it's worth fixing. We have another truck here that's two thousand five F two fifty. Um, the quote to fix it is two thousand six hundred dollars. Um, it is, uh, you know, nineteen years old, uh, got oil plug problem, injector problem, metal and oil. We don't really want to sell it, uh, just because, uh, condition it's in, and.
Should we scrap it?
Yeah, we had wanted to remove the truck bed off of it because it, uh, was bought just the last two years, but we'd like to scrap it, uh, with your permission.
What, what kind of truck is it?
It's an O five.
O five.
Pickup?
Yeah.
Oh, pick, pickup, yeah, I have no problem with that. You might, you have a plan to replace it then?
Uh, that's my next one.
Okay, that will have to go through the council to get approval for.
Okay.
This purchase.
And, and you will have to bring a title or she probably has a title up for somebody to sign.
Okay.
You'll have to declare it after you get to bed.
We sold a scrap vehicle on, online and got triple the price.
Really?
Right.
And you might do?
Might be something, good deals.
Yeah, and we would have to advertise it as scrap.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll work. Just bring the, the title, so it's got the VIN number stuff, we just have to prove it, has to be in the Minnesota, we saw that and we approved the scrap of it, and then you can do it.
So I'll get the title to the boardroom?
She'll bring it up the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't know why the sheriff's department, the scrap you have, we'll have to go back to the general fund in the county. Does yours have to do that?
Whatever budget we bought it out of.
Okay, got you.
Uh, for the highway department, we intend to, uh, come up with like a, produce a, uh, vehicle replacement plan.
Great.
Uh, the rules that rotate it in and how we, how we do that. Until then, we have an immediate need, and, um, we do have, um, the budget, uh, and our equipment, uh, line item, line, and if we would, I'd like to request, uh, permission to purchase a truck, and, um.
What are we looking at?
Well, I've got a few different quotes for them. We wanna get a three quarter ton, uh, that way we can apply for it, you can help us with the snow removal, which we might need some of the, for the reasons. Buy a truck now is just a, um, immediate need. It won't be part of our entire, uh, vehicle replacement plan, so.
But you have funds in place to do it?
Yes, under our, our, our equipment budget. And we've, like, I found, there's several trucks, you can spend whatever you want, but I found a particular truck for just twenty thousand dollars that would help us right now immediately, and, um, also help serve the purpose in the winter. And then in the wintertime is when I plan to do a lot more administrative, uh, things like procedure and policy, uh, but also coming up with these plans like the vehicle.
What do you think?
What year truck is it?
It's a two thousand thirteen, and that's the only part I didn't like. Uh, but, uh, it's not, in our vehicle replacement plan, we will not reach back, I don't think, that old of a, a model. But this particular one is, uh, one owner, uh, that was traded in on a new vehicle. Um, I got the car fax, everything on it.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to have something. I don't have a problem. We gotta have it, we gotta have it. As long as you have the money in place, you're not overspending.
And you don't have to go to council for that because you're not getting any additional preparation to set out of your budget to do that. How strapped will I make that line item in the budget? Do we still have money there if you need equipment over the wintertime?
Yes, we still have, we haven't made any purchases with equipment, and, and that was my next thing I was gonna talk to you about.
Susan, does his budget renew the January one? Okay, so you just gotta get to December then.
Yeah, yeah, and so we had the budget out there. Talking about, uh, purchasing equipment, uh, one thing that, uh, I'm really considering was wanting to run past, uh, the commissioners is, uh, purchasing, we purchased sometimes tandem axle dump trucks. Uh, we didn't receive one, uh, this year, so one wasn't ordered last year, but for this year, um, I'm wanting to, to purchase a tri or a quad axle dump truck. Because of the logistics, uh, getting stone, the only way we're gonna save money is to increase the payload. So this could be the truck that is used to fill our stockpiles. It could be running daily. Uh, that right there would save a lot of money for the county.
How much bigger payload can it carry?
So you'd go to, oh, from like seventeen ton, eighteen ton, up to like twenty four, twenty five tons.
So fifty percent, about forty percent, and you're?
Yeah, I understand. And what would use, it could even be used on the jobs, on particular jobs, but, um, that thing would just be running like almost continuously.
I, I think we're, I don't have a problem with it, especially if you're gonna go do all your stockpiling with it, but I think a lot of the reasons I've questioned Randy about this before, why we didn't have a few tri axles, but I think a lot of the counties do it is, the reason they have always gone with tandems is they're overloading a lot of the roads if they have a lot of all tri axles and quads. All these roads that can't withstand it anyway, and I think that's why the counties have maintained, and all counties you look at have tandems.
Yeah.
So you're just talking about keeping on the highway and just running?
Yeah, just for those long hauls, just because, I mean, louder stones coming out of, uh, public county, uh, the turnaround time, just everything about it made sense to me. Just looking at logistics of how do we save money, uh?
Oh, plus, you got one driver instead of two going down the road or three going down the road.
And your fuel consumption's not gonna change much. Not when you hit that size truck, our tandems and tri axles is about the same, so.
I'd say bring us, bring us that number, bring us a proposal.
Uh, that's, I can't figure out any other way to save money when it comes to logistics and, and getting that gravel.
Bring it to us one. Let us see what you got.
Yeah, and then, um, yeah, so then, uh, one thing I wanted to mention, that comes to back purchasing a, a pickup truck, is it's hard to negotiate or talk, uh, about buying with the dealership or anyone, um, without already having that approval. It's like, almost like you're, um, I don't know, the policy or procedure, it'd be nice to be approved.
What, typically we would approve such a thing up to an amount?
Uh, yes, I like that.
So what would be a sufficient up to amount to approve?
Say that twenty thousand is what you're?
Yeah, maybe twenty five thousand for this purpose, um.
Do we expect it to be in the twenty thousand range rather, but, but we could prove twenty five up to, up to that, that's what?
Yeah, um, let me explain exactly, because, uh, this one also I can buy a warranty for, which would be?
I'm guessing it's got a price on it now?
Yeah.
And what is that price? Does that price only come down from there?
Out the doors, uh, twenty one thousand nine hundred eighty seven.
Is that with the warranty?
No, the warranty for a year, uh, forty eight thousand mile warranty would be four thousand nine hundred ninety eight.
So it's gotta be a little over twenty five.
Yeah. Um, I'll do the math for.
Do you have money in your budget elsewhere for the warranty purchase? For me, your equipment line has four thousand dollars in it?
Yes.
And I'd probably recommend buying the, buying the truck and then getting the, finding in your budget the money for the warranty on that.
Yeah, so we're looking at like, uh, twenty six thousand dollars. Yeah, so we're per.
Up to twenty five?
On the truck, and then you can finish the difference of the warranty out of your budget.
Okay.
So.
So Bruce will pay with that. I'd make the motion then to approve, uh, you to purchase that truck, let's say, at a cost of up to twenty five thousand dollars?
At half second, yeah.
All fair and sound.
All right.
And that's a conservative approach to the face of this problem.
Okay.
All right.
And, uh, that's, that's all I've got.
Okay. Think you're doing well. Keep it up.
Definitely call me Wednesday or Thursday if you can get down that way. We'll go check it out, get it figured out.
If I could, with the right temperatures, it might be just the right time to.
I was gonna ask, what's the coldest you can chip seal?
Uh, it's about sixty degrees and rising.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, I mean, it, uh, doesn't recommend after October first, but then again, it's depending on.
Eighty degrees right now in October, so we'd be okay.
We get this, uh, two weeks from now, we'll be shipping soon.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Um, my name's Mike Whiteside. I own a property on Bridgeton Road right next to the schoolhouse, and I have some questions about the blue line.
Okay.
On my end of the street versus when you get downtown, it's like this much closer to the center line.
It should be right at the edge of the right, right of way. Uh, they've always been done from the center line. What the problem is with the center line is, center line varies from place to place. What's up with Dan?
It does sound the only issue, Main Street and Bridgeton down in the business district gets a sixty foot road right of way. So it's crowded over more, and then when they shoot a line down it, it actually changes and narrows up. So it's not gonna be exactly.
Well, seeing my blue line where my property is, I have a couple of telephone poles, and it's even back behind the telephone poles a couple of feet, and I'm thinking, well, I shouldn't, the blue line shouldn't be?
It could be if those poles are in our right of way, it could, it could be, and that happens lots of times.
See, the power's kinda, we, we get permission to put their poles in our right of way, they.
Cause it's actually real wide where, where I'm at, and it just seems like they're being a little stinty, because I, I, I bought the property five, six years ago now, and I am a vendor. I have food in Mansfield and I have my property, and then I also rent downtown Bridgeton and stuff, so, um.
It would be a point of finding what that right of way width is there, and then go from the middle of the road, half of whatever that width is? Luke can probably tell you what that right of way is and at that, that spot.
Cause I'm gonna try to build a retainer wall to, I already had thirty, some truckloads of gravel put in there so I could have some vendors, which is actually making the festival extend towards the school even further since we've done this work down there. Um, trying to fix the place up and new paint and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, don't be surprised that.
My next question, Dan, was, uh, you know how you put the rocks and they're like thirty yards from my driveway? And I literally, I, I gotta go back and forth to Mansfield all week, so the rock, the shut down roads kinda hurt me a little bit, but I can deal with it. I'm having to drive in my neighbors across the street on their grass to get around the one rock. I, if, I don't know if it was possible, there isn't any intersections between where the rocks are and where my driveway is, about thirty yards. I just was wondering if maybe you could move them rocks thirty yards towards my house so I could get out of that driveway, or should I just keep going through the neighbor's yard because?
Can't go through the neighbor's yard. He's gonna be upset about that.
Right. I talked to him, boy, he wasn't too bad, boy, but I thought that that wasn't fair to him at all.
If he gives you permission, I told him to store it, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Have you thought about getting with Hammer Browns and just giving them a few bucks to park on them?
So I'd need my truck across on the other side of the rocks. I've considered that too, if Dan was gonna do that.
I mean, you've got three parking lots right there within a rock's throw from where you're at.
Okay, well.
And the bad thing is too, if I move them that thirty yards and do that for you, then cars come up there, then they gotta try to back out.
Yeah, they're already kinda getting caught.
Yeah, it's right now, they're at the turn and they could turn.
I watched it a little bit last year.
Open street, so.
So I can deal with that, Matt. With the blue line, I thought that it would be fair if the blue line was at least at the telephone poles. Because you can't get a.
You just can't, you just can't go by the telephone poles because we, over the years, many times we've allowed utilities to go in the right, right of way. So Luke can tell you what the right of way is in that area you're talking about.
Yeah, my, I could hear your address. Eighty four thirty six. I'm the old band host of the school.
So just whatever that, half of the right, right of way from the mid, mid line over. What we get into sometimes, I'm sure you understand that too, is just because that mid line is the mid line of the paved road, doesn't mean it's mid line of the right of way because that right of way doesn't, the road doesn't always follow exactly where the right of way was. If they, whoever's building the road had to move over a little bit for some reason, or some over here, some reason.
I understand.
They're still within the right of way. We may only have a foot on this side of the right of way and have ten feet on the other side of the, of the pavement on the right of way. So best we can do is just go middle of the road, so he can tell you how real the right of way is and go that many feet from that.
Yeah, nothing to consider too, uh, not just the emergency vehicles, but also places people to, to rest and to get out of way.
Yep.
That, that's a big portion of it too, but, uh, I'll, I'll meet you out there if you don't mind and take a look at it.
Thanks, that's my, I mean.
Just make sure all.
All the guys, your county is awesome. I make a lot of money here. I love my new property that I bought.
Yeah, we're glad you're here.
Place, Dan, did you see that we're getting it painted up down there nice?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, stop by this afternoon and said she was so happy that we're finally doing that.
Good luck there.
Sure.
You're gonna make a secret room.
I do, yeah, yeah, I think we're good. Somebody else? Yes?
Hi, my name's Jennifer, and I live out of Raccoon Lake Estates, and I need some guidance or who can help me, um, as far as building permits and erosion control, um, for when people do build houses, and we have, um, erosion that's coming down on our property. I have been dealing with this since December of last year. Everyone I have called and emailed, I've been ghosted now. Um, it's been over a month, almost.
The area coming down on you, yeah, is it, is it on lake property or is it on some private property coming down on you?
It's private property, but the thing is, is who would do building permits that would, that I could speak with that would come out and actually check the site for issues? Um, I even had DNR, the guy that's head of the DNR, wanted questions answered on emails too. We have not gotten replies back. Um, we've tried to speak with the homeowners. We were told that a squall was going to be put in on the property, and the property was going to be finished on August twelfth. Um, to this date, it has not been completed. There's no erosion control, there's no, um, grass seed sown whatsoever, there's no straw down, there's not, I mean, I even put straw bales up on our property to can, you know, keep the erosion going.
And that'd be nothing.
There's a pond, which I own almost all of it, and they own maybe five yards of it. This erosion is going into the pond, the pond is then going into Raccoon Lake.
And what I would recommend on that, we can't, we, we wouldn't be in position to be able to help with any of that because it's on private property, but DNR can. DNR, if they have any issues with people altering the path of the water, or in this case, if they have erosion running off into that pond, which you say then is running into the lake, the DNR will want to know about that.
But I'd like to know who, as far as building permits for Park County, who, who comes out and actually quote checks?
No building.
There's no building.
That's not the purpose, that's not the purpose of the building permit.
And why would Park County not have building permits as far as people going and checking them and making sure this building is properly built? Because the TK builders basically.
We do not have a building.
Told us they could build a house outside here because Park County didn't hear about.
It's not that we don't care about that. We don't have a building inspector. We might have a need for a building inspector. We've had building inspectors in the past, and that was not successful at all, and I'll attempt to do it. We have building permits required to get permission to do the building, but as far as the actual building of itself, that's on the, that's on the homeowner. There are state codes that need to be followed. So you can call the state and have the state come check those building codes, but we do not have a, a building code for Park County and building inspector to do that.
I've called IBM and they said that we need to come back to the Park, to Park County, and that's the thing, is Park County has a need for a building inspector. Park County's missing out on a lot of money by not having a building inspector, A, and having that building inspector go out and check those building lots.
You may well be. You may well be exactly right on that.
And see silt fencing on flat ground, all around flat ground, there's silt fencing for erosion control. This runs downhill and their erosion is coming down onto our property. So it's ruining our property. I mean, there's times when we get an inch and a half of rain, there's so much silt coming down, you can't walk up on the top property. There used to be grass, but now it's nothing but dirt.
Well.
And it's like, how would you feel if you have a building next to you?
It's a matter of who the responsibility is, that's what the issue is, it's whose responsibility is it? First off, it's not accounting responsibility, it's private property. So that being understood, if you're having a problem with your neighbor on them damaging your property, you need to hire an attorney and let him begin that process to get those people in who figure out those, there are engineering companies that do those kinds of figuring, who do that kind of stuff.
Park County, like I said, it, is Park County, you need the building permit, Park County should be responsible.
No, they shouldn't be, you can say that all you want, ma'am, but it just doesn't change the fact that, no, we don't have to. We are not required to have a building, uh, inspector, we are not required to have a building inspector. We do the building permits, the only.
I'm saying that as far as you're handing out the building permit, for something you build, you should follow up to make sure it's built properly and it's not ruining the neighboring properties.
But that's what I'm trying to tell you. It's not our responsibility to monitor someone once they've purchased property, the building permit purpose. And you can roll your eyes all you want at me.
It's for tax purposes.
It's, the only reason we have a building permit is for tax purposes, to get that on the tax rolls, that's the only purpose. We don't, we require size and the size has to match for, uh, the health department to have enough room to have a septic system and a sewer and a, a finger system. So the requirement's on size. But as far as anything else going on on that private property is not accounting business, we are not the monitor of people's behavior. If you are having someone damage you, you need to hire an attorney and have him begin the process of, of finding out what that is, where that's coming from, and then make them stop that, but that is not a county's responsibility.
The county is losing money though, by not having followed through on these buildings. Because A, if they had the follow through on the building permit, where the building was, they would have told the person they needed silt fencing. That would have stopped the erosion control and that would have stopped me with money coming out of my pocket trying to refix my property. Why should I have to have money coming out of my property to fix my property?
Why should the county pay for that?
The county should at least, when they hand out the building permit, they should be responsible for following through to make sure that that building is built properly and they, and they have maintained.
I would disagree with that. So, and, and we're, you know, it's okay to disagree, it's all right, it's where we are, but I would disagree with that, I think personally.
If you look at other counties, they, other counties follow through on the building permits and if they don't, they give out fines and they make money off of that by following through and making sure that those buildings are built properly and that building lot that they're building on is protecting the neighboring properties.
Okay.
So soil control, I mean, we have a soil conservation, they, they don't care what's going on in the county either? Cause they basically told us that they, that they don't care about the soil either that's being.
They didn't tell you they didn't care about the soil at all, so they didn't care. I, I appreciate, I appreciate your frustration, you want somebody to come and solve your problem and that, we aren't the entity to solve that problem. There are people to solve those problems, but you need to hire them to fix your property, you can't expect the other taxpayers.
So I have to pay money out of my pocket because.
You want me to pay money out of my pocket in taxes to pay for your problem, that's what you're asking for. All the taxpayers should be paying for this to fix your property.
I'm sure they would appreciate it though if their property was being damaged as well, at least they would know that the building is being built properly.